Hey, we'll call the meeting to order. Glad to see it's finally spring out there. Maybe, hopefully I haven't jinxed it. We'll recess the meeting and move into our nonstat public hearing. Purpose of this hearing is bylaw 02/2019 South Bowl Landing road closure. Mr. Nordquist, good evening.
Good evening. So I'm here to present bylaw 02-2019 for the nonstatutory public hearing tonight. This is for the South Bowl Landing road closure. So this bylaw is proposing to close a portion of an undeveloped road allowance along the south boundary of the south half of section 26, township 25, range 4 west of the 5th Meridian, and the southwest quarter of section 25, township 25, range 4 west of the 5th Meridian. So this road closure is needed to facilitate the relocation of an existing Altolink transmission line along the south boundary of the proposed neighborhood. Upon closure of this road, the road allowance will be transferred to the town as a fee simple lot. It will be re-designated as urban reserve, and right-of-way will be registered on title for the transmission line. So here we just have a map of the proposed road closure area. So you can see the area in blue at the bottom of the map is the area proposed for closure, and it runs for the most part of the south boundary of the neighborhood. So in the South Bowl Landing neighborhood plan, it identifies a constraint of this transmission line, and the plan put forth was to relocate the line to improve the master planning of the neighborhood, and it would integrate it with the existing ATCO pipeline right-of-way to reduce inefficiencies in the neighborhood overall. This would also act as a rural-urban interface at the south boundary, and they have proposed a cross-section which I'll get to later. So here is the land use map of the South Bowl Landing neighborhood plan with the existing Altolink transmission line highlighted in red, and you can see how it crosses the neighborhood. And I'll also quickly highlight the ATCO pipeline right-of-way where they propose to line it and then along the road closure, which will look something like this blue outline here. And you can see how it would act as a buffer between the employment area and the residential as well as along the south for that rural-urban interface. And with that proposed rural-urban interface, there is a proposed cross-section here with a livestock fence. You can see the power, proposed power pole, as well as a pedestrian pass and then another chain-link fence along the rear of the residential properties. So the proposal has been circulated to both external agencies and internal departments with no major concerns received. It was also circulated to adjacent landowners where we received four responses with concerns how this will negatively impact their properties. Those letters are attached in your agenda package. It was also presented to the Cochrane Planning Commission for comment on February 20th, and they had no comments or concerns with the proposal. And the public hearing tonight was advertised in the Cochrane Eagle for two weeks. So administration is recommending that council receives and considers all comments presented during this nonstatutory public hearing. After the nonstatutory public hearing is complete, the comments received tonight will form part of the request for approval when the application is sent to Alberta Transportation. That's my presentation for night, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Counsel, any questions? Administration? No? I have a couple, just on the road closure itself. What is the state of it now? Is there a road there? Is it passable? Has it been used?
So through the chair, it is an undeveloped road allowance. So when this land was originally surveyed, they surveyed basically, they surveyed this space to allocate for future roadway, but that roadway was never developed. So it does provide legal access to these parcels, but it doesn't actually have any physical access.
So there's no road there at all?
No, no existing.
Okay. And the topography, has it, I haven't actually been on-site. Is it flat? Is it? I mean, we've had a couple of responses in the package about access, future access. I'm just wondering about the...
I don't have the, or through the chair, I don't have the topography here, but you can see this future, I believe it's designated as ER on this map, is a slope which leads down to the river. So this is more or less undevelopable, and it extends along south into the properties to the east and souths.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No other questions? Okay, we'll go to the speakers list. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. I will, my points will be covered by another speaker, but I wanted to note that in the past I have never received on anything like this, any of the correspondence that comes from Cochrane, and neither does my brother Gary, who lives in Australia, and I can kind of understand that one, but I don't live very far away, so, thank you. I am concerned with access both for public and for us, and especially if there was emergencies. I don't know how you'd get a fire truck or an ambulance into something that has been closed off for another reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Claire Woodside and James Scott. Did I close it? Sorry, I closed it. One moment. This one? Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. My name is Claire Woodside, and I'm a planner with StanTech Consulting, and I'm here with James Scott from Philco Farms, here to speak briefly on behalf of the road closure. So the proposed road closure before you tonight is in alignment with the council-approved South Bowl Landing neighborhood plan. There is no change to the contemplated access or network from that approved plan. And what we've done is we've envisioned this as part of a means to realign the Altolink line that's currently in place. This will not only make a more functional and connected plan, but it also allows for the development of an off-leash dog park along the south boundary as well as that more appropriate rural-urban interface that Adam mentioned. We also just wanted to note that it is an undeveloped road allowance as per your question. There is no road in place, and the closure of the allowance doesn't take away any current access, and it also maintains legal and physical access to all the parcels adjacent to the road. Further to this, South Bowl Landing has accounted for future accesses south into Rocky View County at the appropriate time, so that has been accounted for to ensure that there's connectivity in future. So on behalf of both Philco Farms and StanTech, we just wanted to thank you for your time and your consideration of the application, and should you have any questions, you can ask myself or James Scott. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel? No questions? One comment you just made was, are you planning in your development to allow access into Rocky View County? Is that what I heard you say, or?
There is future access into Rocky View County through the neighborhood plan process. There would be two connections going south, one through here, and the second one being here. We have worked with Altolink to ensure that when they redesign that line as it's moved, there would be appropriate coverage and things like that for connectivity south.
Okay, thank you. Don't see any other questions. Oh, there's one. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you. I also haven't been to the area that we're talking about, so I have no idea visually what it currently looks like or what the proposal is. Is this, is this above-grade or below-ground transmission that we're moving to?
It would still be above-grade.
Above, yeah. And could you just give me an idea of the, the physical look of it? How, how large are the, are the posts or the wires that are going to stretch across there?
They're wooden poles, and Adam had shown it in one of the cross-sections.
There we go.
Oh, we do have a picture of it, thank you. It's not in the package. It's not in the package. And so I guess with that picture, what I don't understand is there was two allowances from the south there for future construction, I think we just talked about there?
Road construction.
Right, and that would work, that would work with the above-grade, the posts that run, so they would just run underneath the wires would be there?
Yeah, we've worked with Altolink to ensure that where those future accesses are planned, they would increase the height of the line and ensure the adequate pole spacing to accommodate that. So they're aware that those future connections would be needed.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Sean Monroe. I live a couple miles south of those lands, but I'm here on behalf of my family. My mother's Maureen Monroe will speak. My aunt is Brenda Young Good, and my uncle is Gary Young. They're all siblings together, and they're the co-owners of these lands. And if, if I were able to go back to the, sorry, if you don't mind, go back to just that map that showed, so, the... The lands that our family owns is 74 acres here, which I believe is the southeast of 25, and then this quarter down. I don't want to poke anybody in the eye here. So there's 160 acres plus 74 acres that are there. So the concern that our family has is the loss of that access and no ability in future to have access to the, to the west. I wanted to talk about a couple of points. It was indicated that, I thought I heard StanTech say that there would be access, or sorry, there would be access to all adjacent lands. Well, that's not the case for this road allowance here. These are the adjacent lands, and there's no access there. The other point I heard is that there was access into Rocky View at this spot and at that spot. Both of those locations are where the road allowance will be closed, so there is no road. It doesn't go anywhere from there, so there's no ability for those lands. So I, I wanted to slightly disagree with that. The other thing, I've spent my whole life riding bikes and horses and everything around here, and this area is not a steeper slope. The steeper slope is where the trees are, further down. So this, this is a fairly straight, there may be some slope there, I wouldn't want to say there wasn't some, but it's not a significant impassable slope. This is very much a passable road, and you can come in lower down off the highway, there's a locked gate there, and you can, you can drive along it. It's not, you could easily pass it, is what I'm trying to say. It's not some impediment to passage. There was mention of, staff member mentioned an urban-rural interface, but I don't know what that was. Perhaps it was those two locations that I just mentioned, but that doesn't seem to be any real rural-urban interface. It's an interface to, to the lands immediately south with no road allowance access to them. So it doesn't give, give our family any access to, to those lands. I had just a few other points I wanted to make. You'll bear with me for two seconds to find my notes. So fundamentally, there's no concern about these lands being developed. The power line is currently on the developer's lands along the route there. So the concern is the desire to utilize those lands, and that, in the original incarnation of the area structure plan, that line was recognized as being there. Now, years later, it's been moved to the bottom, and as a result, really what they're doing is taking these lands for the development purpose and then taking up what our provincial and town-administered road allowance, and so really they're, instead of finding a way to make their development so that you could put the poles, and you saw the picture of the road, if you put those single monopoles either to the south or to the north edge of the road allowance, you'd be able to keep that road allowance. There are poles, including transmission line poles, along road allowances all over the place. There's a way to make this work, and that leads to my second point. My relatives have not been consulted on this. I had a conversation one time because I happened to know the president of Hope Wealth for our kids' football, but, but there's been no sort of, let's come out and talk about this. It's basically, the position has been, well, you're not in the town of Cochrane, and since you're not in the town of Cochrane, there's not a lot we can do for you. So we're here, these lands aren't in the town of Cochrane yet. They may be in future. I would have thought the town would like to preserve some level of real access for 240 acres, which, which is near there, and at least there ought to have been some kind of consultation with these, with the three owners to try and work through this. The other point to mention, and I wish I had a bigger map, better map, is that this property extends over to about here, so extends over to about there, okay? And then it goes down. So, so the only other access to this land is on the east side, and it does not actually go all the way to the east side of that 240 acres. It has to stop before because there's a very steep slope a half-mile to the east, and you can't get down it. So this is the, in future, however these lands are going to be dealt with, this will remove the main and only real access into these lands that would go along government road allowance. There is no alternate access, and I have, I expect there's no provision to put that in, but I have a map that shows that, and, but essentially, I can show you, and here's the other point that's important, and this is surprising. When you map it out, if you're going to come from where that road allowance is, which is kind of over here, well, it does, it gets down to about there, and apologies, I'm not going to get you, I promise. It is a, I'm not going to draw it, because I'm going to go right across all of their heads and back up. It's five and a half miles to Cochrane. So it makes, it makes the people, if there's grandchildren who want to live on that property, great-grandchildren, this is a, this is a legacy piece of ground that's been in our family for five, probably six generations, and, and you're taking away our right to get to Cochrane, which is, we farmed in this area. Cochrane is the place we go. We're closest to Cochrane than anywhere. So the notion that there's not a solution here that will allow people to work together to preserve an existing road allowance, which is the only road allowance on the west side, and it saves, whoops, excuse me, saves almost a six-mile drive, I don't, I don't believe that's a fair outcome. The other point to mention is there is a deep cooley in the middle of this property, so it's not easily to traverse down and up across. There needs to be access from both sides because of that cooley that's in place there to order to make effective use of this property. Right now, you need, you need a horse, you need a quad, you need a four-wheel drive. Honestly, that's how you get through there right now. But you can easily access for future development purposes, the, the road from the road allowances on both sides, and, and so it would avoid that six-mile trip. So because these lands are immediately adjacent to Cochrane, and the access is very much important, we would ask that there be some sort of resolution here, and the resolutions I'm proposing, I'm nearly through, and I apologize if I've taken too much time, the, the outcomes would be, you know, find another spot for the utility right-of-way. Quite frankly, if the developer's gaining the lands for the, for the, from the existing right-of-way, well, perhaps they could find some other lands through their own lands that are all through there to, to, to have an alternate place for the power line. The second would be put the line beside the road, so the road can stay in place and be developed in future. There are, you know, it's interesting that if, I'm sure they don't want us driving through their development, I don't blame them, but even if, excuse me, even if you had this portion here not closed, you could at least get to one of those interface points. That's a distant third choice, I'm sure, for both us and the developer, but that would allow some way to traverse through to these lands. And I'm glad to see it's a monopole configuration. I think presently it's a, it's a, it's an H-frame configuration, so the monopole lends itself to that kind of a solution. I think, and I appreciate your patience, I think that's all I have to say, and I'm happy to answer, Mr. Mayor, councilors, any, any questions that people have about this. And my mom is still to come, too, maybe I should have waited for her, but anyways.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. I just, before you leave the podium there, is there a, do we have another map? Do we have access to a zoomed-out version where we can see the lands that are in question? Maybe we give two minutes for that, and I can ask you another question while we're looking at that? Just while Mr. Heineman's doing that, Mr. Monroe, if you, how do you currently access your lands?
So how we currently access the lands, once in a while I'll come this way on a motorbike or something, but...
Like through the road allowance?
Yeah. You can, you can come through that log gate, head north.
Just go along it, but you're going through the fields and stuff. It's, it's field. Where, where we access it is we access it on the east side, and so if everybody knows where the, the new provincial park is there, Tim Harvey's place, people have donated the land for that park, are on the south side of the river, and that's where the farmhouse is. We go down that road, straight from Brenda, straight from mom and dad, straight from our, our parcel, down towards the river. Before we get to the 240 acres, about a quarter-mile or so, you have to get off the road into another private parcel and go down to the river that way. The land is used for agricultural purposes at present. The concern is losing the potential to access for future purposes. It, it may just be people want to live there. Right now, you'd have to find some easement or something across the other property, which is also owned by the family, don't get me wrong, but it's, it's not these three individuals together who own it like they own the 240 acres. So when I, once this map's up, I can point you exactly to how that, how that, there's no way I can just do this map?
You can, you can. Yeah? I can take that for you. Yeah? I think this will help. So here...
Yeah. Great. Perfect. Perfect. So I can explain this all, and thank you very much, by the way.
If you can maybe just outline the end of the South Bowl Landing.
Of course.
If you could just point out the end of the South Bowl Landing and then where your...
Yeah, absolutely. And if I can, this map will help, because I've actually highlighted, I've actually highlighted it to allow people to see how this works. So, so the town of Cochrane is the white in the middle, and the portion I've highlighted in yellow is the 234 acres, I guess. So where we're on the map is, is the property starts about there, whoops, sorry, about there, and then there's, this is the, is the 74 acres, and this is the, the 160. The road stops here, this is the driveway into Tim's house, and then, I live just right about there, a little bit further south. And then, and then this road allowance, just you can't get down here. It's a steep, steep drop to the river. So what happens is that this property here, which is a separate 160 acres that my mom owns, is, you have to cross that property and get over the property line boundary, which I would say is right there, and then you, and it winds down to the river from there.
Way more clear. Thank you. Any questions of council? Mr. Monroe? Counselor Wilson?
Just a quick one for clarity. You were talking about possible solutions that you think would be more advisable, and your second one was moving the transmission lines on the road allowance just to the south instead of being up the center, I guess, where we're currently proposing them? Yes, is that...
Yeah, or to the north.
Or to the north, either one.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't suppose you'd know offhand, it's hard to see with the map exactly how wide the road allowance is, but I'm just picturing a normal secondary road allowance.
Yeah, I took a look, and I'm pretty sure it's the old 66 feet, not the big 100 feet. So that's the, I think that's the standard width of a road allowance, and I did have a map that shows me, and, oh, it's, the place you can see is that cross-section. If we could go back to the cross-section that showed the wood pole, I can tell you, I can point you right to where that number is. It's on, it's in your, it's in your materials.
This isn't... No, he's going to.
Yeah, so if you go there, there's actually numbers on that map that show you the width of the, of the road allowance, and it's sort of dark, but I think it's about 25 meters, which I think is a 66 feet, but...
Great. Yeah. Thank you for the clarity. I just wondered on option two, you were talking about there.
Yeah, it's, well, sorry, it's 20 meters, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Or whatever other solution preserves the access. Frankly, I probably missed an obvious one, but...
Okay, any more questions from council? No? Okay, thank you for your presentation and the map.
Thank you.
Call up Ms. Maureen Monroe. Good evening.
Hello, and thank you for your time. We've done this before. This is the second time we've came and talked about keeping the east end of that road allowance open, and we've written some letters, and we've came and spoke here once before, and they did leave it open, the east end of that road allowance, but it was done, there was a bylaw, and the bylaw expired, so that's why we are having to discuss this once more. Now, the east end of that, where the road allowance is being closed, is difficult to get to, the part of the 74 acres that's along the Bow River. Now, the land that's along the Bow River, if we could get north on that, we have a provincial grazing lease, so somehow we have to get cattle down there. Now, the other difficult thing is, of course, getting down to the flat to go west to get to that area. Now, the other interesting thing is that at least two people in this room, I have driven down there so they could look and see what, what the topography was like. Now, I think that one other thing that we haven't talked about is Rocky View County taking that 74 or 78 acres... taking that 74 or 78 acres and saying to Cochrane, if you want to run, keep a hold of this, annex it. Now, I talked to somebody today that even said, remember to mention the annexation because it is something that we've talked about before and that I believe, according to this person, that Rockview County and Cochrane have discussed. So that also might be very helpful if that was Cochrane's. Now, if there's a fire or an accident, how do people get there to look after this problem? The accident or the fire? Now, I'm not saying that, you know, that it's Cochrane's responsibility, it's just that it, you know, if the wind was blowing that way, it would blow you right up to the South Bowl Landing subdivision. So there's a, there is a good reason to have access that in case there was an emergency. So what we really probably need is some way to get emergency access. Now, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Don't see any questions.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. James Scott? You're good? And I see Maureen Monroe again. Is it a different?
Oh. I, uh, my mom was a bit late, so I wrote her name down, she probably wrote it down again.
Okay, all good. Is there anyone else in the gallery that wishes to speak for or against the bylaw for the road closure? Nope? Okay, um, maybe we'll bring administration up just to close, if we could. Is there any other questions for administration that you've got since we heard from all the Counselor McFadden?
Yes, sir, I did have two questions that, uh, if you could speak to. Uh, the one was, um, if you could speak to the staying in contact with the, the neighbors in this case and also how, um, you know, we'd want to be good neighbors, but how would we do emergency access, uh, in that end of the world, if you could speak to that?
Um, so I'll start first with the process. So when we did do our circulation, we did send it to all adjacent landowners, so it would have been sent to whatever address is registered on their land title. Um, because these adjacent properties are in the county, we don't have access to the full tax information if they have any alternative address. So our main form is through regular mail to whatever address is registered on the title. Um, as well as we do advertise the public hearing, uh, in the newspaper for two weeks ahead of time. Um, as far as the emergency access, um, I'm not sure if I'm the one to maybe answer that right now.
Uh, through the chair to you, Counselor McFadden. For emergency access, uh, I think we have to look at the current situation. Obviously, South Bowl Landing and this land is, uh, agricultural in nature, so emergency access, uh, they would, uh, gain perhaps, uh, through Cochrane on the, uh, the gravel haul route, but then they would have to, uh, obviously go through a fence and get over here. There is a, a lot of topography. I was, uh, one of the pers- uh, people that, uh, Ms. Monroe mentioned who has been on the property and, and I, I'm well aware of the, uh, the topography in this case. Uh, emergency access, the fire from, uh, the Spring Bank Fire Department would also probably come up Range Road 40 again, then they would be coming on to a agricultural property. And there are some challenges associated, they'd probably be using the bush buggies and things like that to attack a fire. I don't think that you could take a, uh, uh, the fire engine down, uh, those slopes, quite frankly, unless we didn't want to get it back.
Right. And we do. All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions that are meant? Counselor Wilson?
Just curious if, uh, did administration consider other options for this? Were there other options, uh, that we were choosing between such as, uh, option two we just talked about with, uh, the spacing on the actual road allowance of the eventual transmission lines?
Um, so administration, when we looked at this, we are currently pursuing, looking at that crossing agreement, so this would be, um, option three. Um, so this would allow, um, it would be an agreement with Altolink and the private landowners to cross that property to reach that access into the neighborhood, uh, and that's the current option that has been discussed. And that was being discussed when we, um, previously with the previous bylaw, uh, until that bylaw, um, expired. And now we need to, again, reopen this bylaw so we can continue that conversation.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm tiptoeing, I realize this is just a, this is a public hearing and not time for opinion. I appreciate the extra information.
If I can, for Counselor Wilson's benefit and the, and the rest of council, uh, we have been working on this, uh, road closure for quite some time. And I just want to provide some additional clarity in terms of the road closure process and really the outcome that the town's, uh, looking for. Uh, we have examined a, a number of different options. Uh, we did propose closing the entire road allowance, uh, understanding the concerns of the adjacent neighbors. If you do look at the, uh, proposal, we are not closing the eastern portion of that, uh, which leaves that open for, uh, these residents to gain access in the future. So if you look on here, you can see it'll, it goes, uh, through that purple area and then the balance would be, uh, uh, open or remain open if they, uh, wanted to do that. In terms of the road closure process, I just want to explain what happens, uh, your, your get, you have the input from this evening, uh, if you decide to proceed, this, uh, goes to the province and then the province will consider this. And then if ultimately this comes back to us, uh, and there is support, uh, then what is actually happening is this becomes a titled piece of property to the town of Cochrane. So Mr. Monroe Sean, uh, brought up a good point, uh, with respect to, well, what about the alignment? I want to just be fully clear in terms of the discussions that we've had since 2015 with, uh, PBA and, uh, the intent was we have, uh, reached an agreement that the closure and realignment, which will allow this development to proceed, would allow us to acquire a piece of property because, again, they're benefiting from putting this road allowance for their development, uh, or putting the, uh, power line in the, uh, road allowance, that we would have a location for a fu- future emergency services, uh, uh, location within South Bowl Landing in the employment area. So there is that, uh, that factor as well, but, and, and then the other thing I would like to, uh, certainly share is that, uh, we did, uh, use the, uh, Rockview County Agricultural Master Plan, which talked about interface, um, with those lands to the south. Uh, again, uh, Mr. Monroe did bring up a good point, I guess the interface on the eastern portion with, uh, the Monroe lands, uh, should be considered, but certainly we'll do that at the detailed design stage. Um, and the other thing that I would, uh, I guess other two points is this power line in this location, it was to be an amenity, off-leash dog park, uh, benefit connecting this entire development with an open space network, uh, creating an amenity. And then at the time when this was considered, this was discussed previously and both council and the developer did not support extending access in to the county. So those are all the things that I just wanted to share to ensure that there's clarity, uh, in terms of this application.
Yep. Yep. I still have the floor, there's, there's two entrances, Mr. Heineman down, that still lead down across the transmission line, if that's correct, in the-
That is correct, that is, uh, future planning. Um, the intent would be that while that portion of the road, there would be the opportunity to extend roads, uh, should future annexation of those lands occur.
And they would proceed, obviously, in a north-south direction because we've now closed off opportunity for an east-west on the-
Uh, well, they would go north-south, uh, they would continue, we're just closing that, so again, there's the span that's been considered with Altolink, so a road can go underneath that, uh, portion of the road allowance that we're closing.
Thank you.
Just further to that, well, before we get to you, Counselor Fadeco, would that off-leash area, um, have the ability to allow emergency access?
Yes, it would, uh, because, uh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it would because the, uh, there would be a pathway, so the regional, three-meter regional path. And, and that was one of the things that we had discussed as well, uh, for the adjacent residences is, uh, as South Bowl Landing develops, uh, that the eastern portion would be open and that we could have crossing agreements if they needed to gain access. Again, as circumstances change, uh, we have previously committed to these owners to work with them, uh, you know, even though they are in the county and agricultural properties.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fadeco?
I just have, sorry, I just have one quick question. Uh, if it wasn't council-supported, what kind of time delay are we looking at or, uh, what are the risks if, uh, it does not get approved and we send it back?
Through the chair to you, uh, Counselor Fadeco, I think the biggest risk is, uh, we would like, uh, the South Bowl Landing community to be able to move forward. They have a Water Act approval, that takes about a year, uh, I understand that they're currently working on this. This is one of the other significant aspects of this development is to, uh, realign this power line so, uh, the property's not encumbered. Um, they've got some significant investment that they have to make, that being one of the projects, but also from a stormwater perspective. So I think this, to answer your question, would, uh, put self-land, or South Bowl Landing, um, behind, uh, further than they already are.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before we close the hearing? No? Okay, thank you. Public hearing's closed. Good to go? Okay, we are back. Um, call the meeting back to order. Um, addition or deletions to the agenda, I understand we'd like to add an in-camera item, um, advice from officials? Is there anything else? Nope? We get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Counselor Nagel? Okay? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Confirmation of the minutes of our last meeting. Counselor Flowers, you want to do that one? Okay. All those in favor? That's carried as well. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I will be presenting administration's report for second and third reading of bylaw Administration has received a proposed land use bylaw amendment. Bylaw 052019 is therefore a land use bylaw amendment to add vehicle wash minor as a site-specific use to the central business district on Lot 3, Block 15, Plan 0213442, civically known as 354 Railway Street. The red star on the map shows the subject property where it's located within the town of Cochrane's boundary. The yellow star indicates the area of the land use bylaw amendment in the downtown The land use concept map identifies the subject property zoned in the central business district. The surrounding land uses include service commercial district, shopping center district, and the public service district. The purpose of the bylaw is to allow for a site-specific vehicle wash minor to exist within the central business district. The landowner has secured a tenant to develop a two-bay car wash. And currently, the vehicle wash minor is neither a permitted nor discretionary use in the CB district. The land use bylaw amendment supports the MDP adopted by council in 2008, where Section 112, Economic Vitality, says the community of Cochrane takes pride in the entrepreneurial spirit demonstrated in the existing business community and sees great potential for diversifying the local economy and drawing on opportunities in the tourism sec- sector. And as identified in 7.2, the economic development goals are to attract businesses that will diversify Cochrane's economy and create career opportunities, support the economic vitality, and encourage all businesses to stay and expand in the community. In 7.3, the town shall encourage the economic diversification and expansion of its, of existing businesses. The proposed amendment is supported with the downtown area redevelopment plan, where the goal is to maintain the vi- viability of the existing downtown area. Character Area 3, north side of Railway Street, identifies that the area has historically and continues to develop with auto-oriented uses in the recognition of the historical uses of this area and recent decisions to allow auto-oriented uses to develop. The area will continue to cater to uses that benefit from being adjacent to Railway Street and other oriented uses. The red star shows a subject parcel located in Character Area 3 of the downtown area redevelopment The Integrated Downtown Action Plan identifies in its opportunities action established corridor guidelines for Railway Street West that land uses along this corridor are mainly auto-oriented. The purpose and intent of the central business district is to provide for pedestrian-oriented commercial developments serving the town and the surrounding areas. The uses will be those that promote the downtown as Cochrane's primary area of community social interaction and a focus of the civic and cultural identity. Administration recognizes that the proposed land use bylaw amendment does not align with the purpose and intent of the central business district. In addition, the CB district does not align with the higher policies and additional considerations should be considered with the proposed corridor development study underway and how that will change the future function, look, and feel of Railway Street, as well as the outcomes of council's tri-site advisory group in answering the question on how to best develop the Fifth Avenue site. The proposed land use bylaw amendment meets the definition of the vehicle wash minor and vehicle wash Section 11320 in the land use bylaw. These site photos show how the property currently looks. Although the applicant is proposing additional landscaping to the lands, this would be addressed at the development permit stage. Therefore, the proposed bylaw being presented for consideration is for land use only. Bylaw 052019 was circulated to internal departments and external agencies for comment. Cochrane Planning Commission was also presented and prop- the proposed bylaw at the February 20th meeting. All comments received were presented at the public hearing on February 25th. Administration is recommending that council refuse to give second and third reading to bylaw 052019. While the vehicle wash use does not conform with some of the town's overarching planning policies, the proposed amendment does not meet the purpose and intent of the central business district within the land use bylaw, which is to provide for pedestrian-oriented commercial developments serving the town and surrounding rural areas. The uses will be those that promote the downtown as Cochrane's primary area of community social interaction and a focus of civic and cultural identity. Vehicle wash minor use is exclusively an auto-oriented use that will not prom- provide for or result in a pedestrian-oriented commercial development. Vehicle washes do not promote areas of social interaction due to the nature of the use. People either remain in their vehicle while it is being cleaned or wash their vehicle independent of each other in separate bays, not providing the opportunity for people to meet and socialize. It is for these reasons that administration recommends refusal to give second and third reading of bylaw 05219. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Counselor Reed?
Um, I would like to move option one, that council refuse to give second and third reading of this bylaw. Uh, Council Nag- Nagel and I express grave concerns about this, um, issue, particularly the traffic flow, the last time this came up, in relation to the street and now in particular as it relates to the adjacent lane property. And personally, I feel that the, uh, this service, while needed, um, doesn't really fit the, or align with the future development and vision we have for this area, so, um, I'm in, I, I support what's being recommended for those reasons identified. Thank you.
Counselor Nagel?
Um, I'll also be voting to support refusing the application. I do recognize that everybody should have the, uh, the right to use their business property to make money, but doing so should not impede other people's rights to make money on their property. And I feel that a big lineup of cars through this particular parking lot would have a very significant impact on the neighboring businesses and I could see, uh, some real problems forming with getting in and out of businesses if there's a big, uh, car wash lineup through the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Just- Just a point of clarification on the motion. Are we wording that correctly? Motion was to refuse second reading.
Through the chair, the motion to refuse second reading would just leave that bylaw having given first to it, and then it would expire. However, if council wishes to completely defeat the bylaw, then it would be a motion for second reading, which then council would be defeating if there were numbers that actually resulted in that happening.
Okay, so we can proceed either way, though?
Correct.
Refusing, it sits and would expire if supported, and then, or give second reading and either proceed or defeat?
That is correct.
Okay. You're okay with?
I think so.
Yeah?
For the second option, I think.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. I just want to... Is there any other discussion, debate from council? Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, certainly. I think like so many other Cochranites, I'd love another place to wash my car. This is just not the right place for that to happen. This needs to be a pedestrian-focused area, not a vehicle-focused area. So I support, I think, where we're trying to go, but I think I would prefer that we actually defeat second very deliberately, as opposed to let this...
Motion for second reading to defeat or to...
Yes. Are we following? Am I following?
Currently, there is a motion on the floor, which Counsel Reed has put forward to review second reading. He could choose to withdraw that motion and allow another counselor to either put forward the motion for second reading or do that himself.
Okay.
Go ahead. So rescind?
Can I add my vote?
Just rescind it.
Rescind it and then?
Rescind it.
Yeah.
Okay. I rescind it, and then would I recite it correctly, number 2?
We would just move second reading and then debate on second reading.
I'll rescind the first motion.
Okay.
Move that second reading.
Okay.
That's clear.
Clear. All right. Counselor McFadden, you're good?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor Flowers?
I too am against developing into a car wash there. It goes against everything that's been worked on by the tri-site committee and other groups for the pedestrian crossings, so I would like to see it not go forward.
Okay. Any other debate on second reading? Nope? Okay, so just to be clear, you're voting in favor? It would be to proceed with second reading. You're voting against, it would be to defeat second reading. All those in favor of second reading? Opposed. It's defeated. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Ms. Benkyn Pima? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor Janong and members of council. I'm before you this evening to pick up where Mr. Dean's left off back in January, where he asked you for first reading for a bylaw 14-2019, and it's a borrowing bylaw for a 2019 capital project, which will allow us to do the South Arterial Road off of the Bow River Bridge. If council will recall, this is a multi-phase project. Phase 1, the borrowing bylaw, was passed in 2017, and this is the next phase of that construction. And in the capital project, there's a $9 million debenture recognized as a cash flow initiative in order to fund the cost of the project, as the $9 million will be funded through off-site levies, but we don't collect those all upfront and all at one time. So back in January, council gave first reading to this bylaw. Then, as required under the Government Act, we advertised for two weeks, and that was advertised on February 14th and the 21st. Then the public has 15 days from February 21st to file any petitions or make any comments about this proposed borrowing bylaw, and I've confirmed again tonight that there have been no petitions received nor comments. If council were to give third reading this evening, in 30 days, we would have a valid borrowing bylaw, at which time we could go ahead and award a contract so that we could proceed with the project. And that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to field any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to make a motion for second reading? Counselor Wilson?
I will also move second reading of Bylaw 142019.
Okay, is there any discussion or debate? We're going to build a bridge?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of second reading? Carried? Want to carry on to third reading?
Sure. So move third reading of Bylaw 142019.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of that? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always easy to spend $9 million around here, hey? Ms. Bannick, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight I'm before you to present the Sunset Ridge Stage 3 Land Use Amendment, Bylaw 152019, for consideration of second and third reading. The Sunset Ridge Stage 3 lands are located within the northern portion of Sunset Ridge, identified in the orange on the screen, and are the last remaining undeveloped lands within the Sunset Ridge community. This slide is just showing the land use concept from the recently approved Sunset Ridge Stage 3 Neighborhood Plan on the left and the land use application that is being considered on the right. So the application does propose to amend the existing land uses to the R2, as shown in the brighter yellow. R3 to support a strip of townhomes in the orange color, and then public service to facilitate the finalization of the central greenspine and regional pathway, as well as an off-leash dog park. So the R2 zoning is intended to facilitate the development of single detached, laned, and laneless, as well as wide shallow laned product, as well as semi-detached lane and laneless product. Looking at the housing allocation, with the zoning as proposed, it is the applicant's intent to provide roughly 61% as single detached housing, 29% as semi-detached, and close to 10% as townhomes. So the housing variety is proposed to provide a density of approximately 8.04 units per acre, approximately 635 units, which would then equal 1874 residents within Stage 3. Looking at the design features, as I had mentioned, this land use application does complete and finalize the Sunset Ridge community. So with that, the development of Stage 3 would bring that second all-turns access onto Highway 22 at the north end, the completion of the central linear park and regional pathway system through Sunset Ridge, a diversity of housing types, enhanced pathway and pedestrian road crossings around the school site and Central Park, the park site, as well as the Community Association Building, and the completion of the looping Collector Road, as well as an off-leash dog park. Pending approval of the land use, the proposed phasing for Stage 3 would begin with Phase 23, that blue area, that would bring the second access from Highway 22 and connect it into the Collector Road way in Sunset Ridge. The Storm Pond area and the off-leash dog park would also form part of Phase 23, and Phase 24 would include the school site and the Central Park, in addition to the lands east of that parcel, shown in the red color. So with the first phase of Stage 3, the second access into Sunset Ridge would be constructed and connected into the Collector Road of Sunset Ridge, as I had mentioned. During the early development of Stage 3, the dual left-hand turn from Sunset Boulevard, which is the existing access into Sunset Ridge, onto Highway 22 would also be required. This upgrade will also require the twinning of Highway 22 from the 1A intersection to the Sunset Ridge Boulevard intersection. The town, Alberta Transportation, and the developer will have to continue collaborating on that project. Each phase of development will be required to complete traffic analysis that will be used to determine at which phase these and any other transportation upgrades will be required within Sunset Ridge. It is important to note that if the land supply is still available in Stage 2, there's still about three and a half years of housing supply before Stage 3 would begin. Should all approvals be granted, servicing, including the second access, would begin in Stage 3 in 2022, with occupancies beginning in the spring of 2023. So although the entirety of land use is being sought in Stage 3, it will be some time before any new homes are constructed or occupied. This does give the town, the developer, and AT a little bit more time to also work through the twinning solution on Highway 22 to open up the dual left-hand turn when required. So those last few slides were just intended to show council what would be included with the development of Stage 3 under the Neighborhood Plan as approved. That information was meant as background information to the land use application. So tonight, the application before you for consideration is the land use application as shown on the screen. So the proposed changes, there is some of the, sorry, the orange RM, this is the existing land use as it stands today. So the orange RM site is proposed to change down to R2. The Storm Pond area will, sorry, that's the dog park area. Nope, 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 that is the, that is the Storm Pond area, sorry. And that is remaining as Stage 3. This is the new dog park area, so there is a change proposed to take some of the R3 and some of the R2 to change it into the public service for the dog park. The resident, or the urban reserve, as shown in the blue hatched, would change predominantly to R2, but also to the public service and the R3. And then there is the removal of some of the R3 surrounding the school site to change into R2 in this location here, as well as this location here. During the last council meeting, we did hold the public hearing for Bylaw 20152019, and at that time, no members of the public did speak regarding the bylaw. So with that, administration is recommending that council does give second and third reading to Bylaw 152019.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McFadden?
I will move second reading to Bylaw 152019. I see that's an important step in getting those access amenities that we're really working hard to do in Sunset.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fadeco?
I just have one quick question for you. With servicing anticipated for 2022 for the school site, do you know when that would maybe occur and if it's anticipated that it would be able to get onto Rocky View Schools, I guess, budget request for that, for that year or within that following year?
So through the chair, the first phase would be Phase 23, as shown in the blue, and the school site would be proposed to be serviced and developed with Phase 24, which would be the next phase, the phase kind of shown in red around it. In terms of when it would get on Rocky View Schools' list, though, that would be completely up to the school divisions. So basically, the school divisions will all list their priority sites for the entire school division, and they'll submit that to the province every year. The province then goes through the lists for every school division and approves funding accordingly based off need. So we would have no way of knowing precisely, A, when Rocky View would deem this a priority site to put on their list, and B, when the province would actually grant the funding for it. But it would be ready, serviced, within the second phase of this.
Okay, and do you know when that would be? I understand how their budgetary process works, but I'm curious as to when we anticipate that that is going to be actually serviced?
Through the chair, that may be a better question for the developer.
Do you know when you would put Phase 24, service Phase 24?
Good evening. Sorry, is the question when we would have the school site ready for the school?
Yeah, well, I mean, just serviced, right? So that they can be able to put it on their list, because it can't even get on the list if it's not serviced, right?
Yeah, absolutely. It would be our second phase in Stage 3, so likely 2023, 2024, the site would be ready. And just to clarify, it's actually a separate school board, I believe, not Rocky View Schools? So I believe that was kind of...
Through the chair at this point, it has kind of been earmarked for the separate school division, but...
Thank you.
You shall see.
Anyone else? Counselor Wilson?
Just a question to weigh you into the weeds a little bit. I've never, never heard this in any of the things we brought up before. Am I able to ask questions about road widths? Is that something the developer would know offhand?
Through the chair, we do have some of those here, yeah.
There's a road that isn't even part of this proposal, so I guess maybe I can't bring it up here, but it looks like when the school's eventually built out, the white road to the south there would be the main road servicing the front doors of the school. Do we know that yet?
Okay, I kind of, I kind of assumed this question was coming, so I brought some information.
Excellent.
So, just to find my notes here. I brought the other schools we've talked about in the past, too, and their road widths as a comparative, because I, as I mentioned, I kind of assumed this was coming. So I'll just explain them all. So this is the Fireside School. So this is the Collector Road in front of Fireside School. It's called Fireside Way. It is 23.5 meters. This is a residential road standard that the front door of the school faces onto, and it is the 15-meter-old residential standard. So that's even increased more recently to 15.5 meters. This is the existing Ranch View and Sunset...
Sorry, Candace, was that Fireside Parkway you just said?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this is the Ranch View School in Sunset Ridge. So this is the divided collector that would continue up and be the east side of the new school site as well, and that is 27 meters wide. And then the south side on Sun Valley, Sun Valley Road, sorry, the area that's south of the school, it is another Collector Road standard, and that's 21 meters. So when looking at the new proposed school site, it will have that 27-meter divided collector on both the east and west side, and then it is proposed as a 21-meter collector road standard on the north side as well, which would be the same width as the south side of Ranch View School.
That's exciting. Thanks for having that on hand. Do you happen to know, because we're on the subject, both as it extends northward towards the eventual second access, that's also the 21 standard, that road that, I think you just answered that?
Sorry, this...
That road, yep.
That stays as the 27-meter divided collector.
Okay, and then the side streets to the left of that, let's say, off of that? Do we know the widths on those, too?
These over here, sorry?
Yep.
So those would be the residential 15.5 meter.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate you having that on hand. Definitely calms my fears about the school access, at least, that we have much wider roads to all three sides. That's great news. Thanks for indulging me.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, sorry, Counselor Fadeco?
Can I ask one question about kind of piggybacking on Counselor Wilson's comments about that area? Now, is it because that we have another access on the other side that we're really excited about it, that it's 27 meters? Is that kind of the idea, that traffic's going to flow much better around there? Because if Ranch View's already sitting at 21 meters and 27 meters on one side, it's a nightmare. And so that doesn't calm my fears, so is it the fact that we have another side to that loop that we're hoping that it's going to be better managed?
I think there's two sides being added.
Yeah, so through the chair, the slight difference would be, well, not slight difference, I shouldn't say that. So there will be collector roads on all three sides. The Ranch View has the two, with one being dead end. Another difference you're going to see, too, is like you're going to have the Storm Pond across the road on this side, so no homes. These will be side yards, so no one fronting on at this location here either. And then, yes, this would be much the same with the lane access for this portion here, and then this will be the park on this side here. So the important part when figuring this out during the development permit stage will definitely be the routing of the buses and how they access the site, and how they leave the site, and where the parent pick up and drop off area is as well. And maybe there's a better way. We're not going to have a 15-meter side road, definitely.
And I imagine in those talks, you know, depending on which school board takes it on, I mean, there can be continued talks about timing and obviously parking if we need to get into it at that, at that time?
Yes, definitely, on-street parking and what that looks like, for sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Nope? Well, I too am eager to move this forward. I heard from a lot of residents, well, almost every day of the entire term so far, about adding a second access to... adding a second access to Sunset Ridge. I'm glad that this, although we have to wait for it, and there has to be a great deal of infrastructure put in place before we see that second access, that does pave the way for it. So I'll be supporting the bylaw tonight as well, for that reason. So, all those in favor of second reading, is that where we're at? Second reading? Yep. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, it's carried. We're gonna move on with third reading. Counselor McFadden? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a planning show.
The bylaw show?
No. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Janong and council. I'm here to present bylaw 16/2019 for first reading and to set a public hearing for your consideration this evening. Administration is proposing bylaw 16, 2019, to amend the land use bylaw to allow backlit signage for five commercial and industrial districts in the land use bylaw as a discretionary use, and for that these specific applications to be considered and decided by Cochrane Planning Commission. A backlit sign is any sign type that is illuminated from the rear of the sign face. Currently, backlit signage is a prohibited type of signage in Cochrane. This is indicated in the land use bylaw where backlit signs are listed as a prohibited sign type in section 36.7, as well as not being listed as a specific use in the sign table in 36.3.1 in any district as either a permitted or discretionary use. So why are we bringing this forward? We've noticed an increase, a significant increase in inquiries and demand for this type of signage in the business community. Backlit signs were previously discretion in certain districts in commercial, in certain commercial and industrial districts prior to December 2015, and this amendment and proposed regulations are an interim measure until a full review through the Land Use Bylaw Review Project occurs. The five districts that are included in this amendment are the Shopping Center District, the Highway Commercial District, the Service Commercial District, the Business Park District, and the General Industrial District. The intent and purpose of these districts align with allowing more signage options, and the proposed regulations include considering impacts to adjacent uses where that might be a conflict. So where are these districts in town? This is a, a snip or clip from the land use bylaw map, which shows Cochrane's downtown, Cochrane's industrial area, and the middle of Cochrane's Highway 22 area. So this area includes all five of the districts, going from left to right. There's Highway Commercial in the red polka dot, the Shopping Center in deep red, the Service Commercial, which is just a few properties surrounding the Shopping Center, the Industrial in the light gray, and Business Park in the purple. There is a Shopping Center District area located in Sunset Ridge. And in the River Heights area, this area includes four of the five districts included in the amendment, the Highway Commercial District, the Service Commercial District in the raspberry color, the Shopping Center District in South Bull Landing, and the General Industrial District as well. This bylaw was circulated internally and externally, and as well to community associations in February. It will also be presented for comments to the Cochrane Planning Commission at the March 20th meeting if first reading proceeds. Circulation comments and CPC comments will be brought forward for council's consideration at the public hearing. So at this time, administration is recommending option one, that council give first reading to bylaw 16/2019 and establish a public hearing for Monday, March 25th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Counselor Podeko?
I will move option one, that council give first reading to bylaw 16 at 2019 and establish a public hearing for backlit signage for Monday, March 25th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. And I have no comments. But, thank you, it, it really does, being a member of CPC, I think it addresses some of our concerns that we've seen come forth, and so I'm looking, looking forward to hearing some of the feedback that we get from this. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of giving first reading? Oh, sorry, sorry. There we go. Counselor Wilson, question?
Just to clarify, in the zones there, it looked like Historic Downtown was not included in the backlit signage?
That is correct.
Right, okay.
Not included.
I, I share Counselor Podeko's opinions that it's something that needs attention right now, and I appreciate it coming forward and enthusiastically move the motion if it hasn't been moved. I think you already did, though. Okay, sorry.
She's on it. Okay. Okay, any more questions? No? All in favor of first reading? That is carried. You want to carry on with the public hearing date? March 25th?
I'll move that we recommend March 25th for a public hearing and set the date.
All in favor of the public hearing? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty much the whole planning department here tonight? Almost.
Okay, so now I am back before you to present a land use bylaw amendment for the community of Rivercrest. So this is bylaw 17, 2019, for consideration of first reading and setting a public hearing So Rivercrest is located in the southern portion of the town, south of the Bow River, east of Highway 22, and then just north of River Heights Drive, across the road from the Willows Neighborhood. This slide is showing the land use concept from the recently approved Rivercrest Neighborhood Plan. The central portion of Rivercrest has, sorry, the land use in the central portion of Rivercrest has already been granted, and this current application is simply a housekeeping bylaw in order to amend the land use to match the servicing that was required at the subdivision stage for Phase One. So the land use application does include the areas boxed in red on this map. So the first bit is a small triangle up in the northeast corner, and the reason for this is it was left out of the previous land use application. The proposed change is to facilitate the future dedication of environmental reserve, so the land that will remain in its natural state due to slopes on the land. The second bit is the, the walkway location here. So during the Phase One subdivision, just due to the lauding, when they actually lauded everything out, it did make sense to slightly move the walkway slightly south from its originally proposed location. Therefore, this proposed change is just to switch the new walkway area to public service from R1 and the previous walkway location from public service back to R1. And then the third area is just down here, just north of River Heights Drive, and this is relating to the service connections into Rivercrest from River Heights Drive. There was always proposed to be a public utility lot where that connection would occur, and then during the detailed design stage of the subdivision, that location did change slightly. So the PUL did move slightly to the west, which you'll see in the next slide, kind of more to this location here. So again, it's just to switch the land use from the residential to the, the public service to match where that PUL actually ended up. So this slide is just showing the previous land use applications and the existing land use in Rivercrest. So only the central portion was granted land use. The bookend landowners are choosing not to move forward at this time, but here is that triangle piece that you can see that was left out of the previous application, so we're just cleaning that up now. So this slide is just showing the proposed land use amendments. So as discussed, that first area is to change from residential urban reserve to public service for that future environmental reserve triangle up in the corner. The second area is proposed to change the location of the pathway connection, thus switching the R1 and public service zonings. And then the third area, just off River Heights Drive, proposes a switch between R2 and public service to facilitate the creation of a public utility lot that includes the service connections into Rivercrest from River Heights Drive. So with that, administration is recommending that council does give first reading to bylaw 17, 2019, and also that you set the public hearing date for March 25th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Where are we at in the, down to Counselor McFadden again?
I will move that council give first reading to bylaw 17, 2019.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor of first reading? It's carried, thank you. Did you include the public hearing?
I'll move that council establish a public hearing for bylaw 17, 2019 for Monday, March 25th at 6:00 PM.
All those in favor of that? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Mayor's report. Counselor Reed's got his stopwatch on, starting now, two minutes. Fairly busy couple of weeks. I was at Camp Jubilee, Counselor Wilson, you were there as well, to help the Rotary Club announce the Girl Guides as their next beneficiary for funding for replacing the campground that was washed away in the 2013 floods. They also announced at that meeting that Alex Baum would be the community builder being recognized at the fundraising dinner this year. So it was exciting to be a part of. I gave a few words on behalf of the town there. Next up was a press conference, I think you're well aware, I talked about this quite a bit over the past months, the Heavy Rail Mass Transit Project. So that feasibility study has finally been released, it's made public, so we can talk about it freely. Coming out of that meeting, I mean, what's next was really the biggest question for me, so I've since emailed all of the mayors or the representatives of each community along the line and asked them for a meeting. We are having that here on April 4th to facilitate a discussion to start what's the next steps. I'd like to see a committee formed. We don't know the, the makeup of that yet, that's kind of what we'll discuss at this first meeting, who's the stakeholders we should reach out to. There has been some reluctance, I would say is maybe the best word, to, to explain Banff and Canmore as they, we are only being affected by the rail, so that's our primary focus. They are interested in both the busing and the rail components of it, and I'm not suggesting that we dismiss the bus side of things, but I think it needs to be an all-encompassing look at the whole project. But obviously, I'd like to see this move forward as soon as possible and get to the next step. So that's kind of the preliminary steps there. I then gave a presentation one morning to all the Cochrane Realtors, which I thought was, went very well, thanks to Mr. Heineman and the, his help during that meeting, where we kind of gave a little bit of a state-of-the-union address to the Realtors. They are kind of our first point of contact to a lot of new residents moving into Cochrane, and also residents that are moving around Cochrane, helping them relocate. So them having the message of what we're doing and the facts and what new projects and et cetera are on the books, I thought was interesting for them and beneficial for them to have. So we're gonna try and do that at a larger scale next year, kind of reach out to more. We had, I think, about 35 or 40 Realtors in attendance, and I think there's over 100 licensed Realtors in Cochrane. Don't quote me on that number, but there, 35 was not a, a cross-section of all of them. So I'd like to reach more and, and do that at a larger scale in the future. CMRB, we had, oh, obviously, everybody knows the Cochrane Generals are in the third round of the playoffs, so I had a small wager with Mayor Bill Robertson. We were in the second round with Okatoks Grizzlies, I believe it was, and so Mayor Robertson had to wear the Cochrane Generals jersey, my jersey, throughout the entire Growth Management Board Land Use Committee meeting, which he had to take off his, it was great. I, I got pictures of it, I, I'm happy to share. So anyways, that was the beginning of that meeting, and it was good to watch him wear the Cochrane colors for that whole meeting. And then we talked about land use, where we didn't elected Mayor Robertson the vice-chair of the Land Use Committee, which I'm hoping kind of paves the way for me to be the vice-chair of the overall board for the CMRB, so stay tuned for that. I had a discussion this week with Blake Richards, our MP, his office, about asking for an exemption for the tariffs on our steel charges for the bridge. He has since gotten back to us, and it's, I wouldn't say it's, would say it's, I'm optimistic, but hopefully, we would see an exemption or at least a portion of those funds that are already budgeted in the project, but hopefully, we, you know, if you don't ask, you don't, you don't receive, so they're working on that on our behalf to go to the federal minister of, forget the minister, doesn't matter, a minister, to get our funds exempted from the, from that steel tariff, so. It's Seniors on the Bow Coffee again this week, which was quickly, a month had gone by. I curled on the weekend with the, with Kelsey Carey, I believe her name was, a whole end, not a whole end, one rock, I swept down and put right on the button for her. Two terms I did not know prior to the weekend, and so the Alberta Southern, or the Southern Alberta Under 14 Curling Championship was in Cochrane this week, so it was pretty cool to see all the kids down there curling. And then Cochrane Tourism had its rebrand, I don't know, maybe one of the other councillors that was there would want to talk about that, and I mentioned the Cochrane Generals, so I think they're, we got down three games to one, but we're gonna come back, right? So excited to support the team, been to three games now, so I'd like to see all, all of us come out and support them if they get another chance at a home game here, so. I don't know, was that Wednesday? I'm looking at Ms. Low because her son's playing, but I put her on the spot, but let's move on to the next council report, and you can come back with the, the date that the next potential home game is, and hopefully, I haven't jinxed it. Counselor Flowers?
Just wanted to start by saying happy birthday, Mayor Janong.
What was that, today?
Did you say you're soon eligible to join the Seniors on the Bow?
If it's 50 and over, I'm in, yes.
I, too, attended the Seniors on the Bow meeting, and always good discussion with the seniors about what's happening in the community. Counselor Podeko and I both attended the International Women's Day up at Glen Eagles Golf Course.
Thank you for that.
And really good speaker, doing work in Bangladesh with teaching women to teach skills to young people, boys and girls. It was really emotional, and we really live in a good country here, we don't know how good we have it. What else? I did also attend the Cochrane Tourism rebrand, and I was really impressed with the work that they've done. It's really in line with a lot of the things that we've been talking about as a council, and great work done there, and good news about the electric buses that we...
Oh, yes, thank you.
That's really exciting.
Counselor Wilson?
Just two things on mine, I also went to the Girl Guides thing, I was on the fence of will I go, won't I go, I'm glad I did, it was a really, really cool event, and good to see all the, you know, the community participation out there is, it's very humbling and exciting when you, when you witness it firsthand, I'm glad I went to that. I did the, one more CMRB servicing committee, following up on your land use meeting. We created a water table roadmap, which really means we're moving towards our December 2020 mandate for having some deliverables to the Alberta government for what we're gonna do with some of our regional water problems, how we're gonna address them, how we're gonna solve them, so we're just in the RFP process to get some consultant help right now, and hopefully, we'll have some actual news to announce soon. Speaking of vice-chairs, I put my name forward for the vice-chair, came up 5-5 and then lost in a random draw, so I need to find a, I need to find a sixth friend out of 10 on the board. I'm, I'm sure Suzanne, who beat me out, will do a great job, she's good for it as well, so that's my update.
Glad you put your name forward. Thank you. Counselor Podeko?
Counselor Wilson, wasn't it your birthday yesterday, too?
Yes.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you.
Only a couple of things, Counselor Wilson, Counselor Flowers, and Counselor McFadden and I will be well dressed and rocking it out at Big Brothers Big Sisters Rock'em Bowl this weekend, so we are going to be doing that, and no strike, or all strikes, no cutter bulbs, so. And then FCSS has a couple of things coming up, obviously, we're looking forward to adding a few more members to that board, we have, I think, some members coming up at our next We have, I think, um, some members coming up at our next meeting will be elected, and then we are doling out some money on April third, um, just having a presentation and presenting, uh, those groups their funds. And on April sixth, of course, is a good opportunity to come out and support all our great volunteers here in Cochrane, um, as we do volunteer, their volunteer appreciation event at the Cochrane Movie House. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Council Reed?
Thank you. Uh, I too was at the Cochrane rebranding and the Cochrane Tourism, and, um, I, you know, I, I don't normally express my, uh, feelings publicly, but I was literally, I literally had shivers up my spine by the excitement of what this, what this represents, and I would encourage all counselors, if they haven't any opportunity to, to see that, to take a look, uh, and I think you'll recognize what Sister, or Councilor Flowers had said in terms of what it does for our future, what we were talking about in terms of our, our feelings and visions of the future, so, um, yeah, it's really exciting, and I can't understate it in terms of being able to encourage others to, to take a look at it.
Thank you. Councilor McFadden?
I just wanted to do a quick shout-out for the Parks and Recreation Committee's work. Uh, we've had our meeting for the month already, and then, um, on Saturday, we're doing the delegation day to hear from, um, recreation groups that maybe see a future for themselves on the Horsesh Creek lands as part of a, you know, Cochrane Sports Plex vision, and so we're going to be working on that all day on Saturday, and looking forward to hearing for some more of the groups. Um, that committee is, uh, is eager to do two, two and a half months of work on that, and had also started to divvy up some of the work on the other items that, uh, council has given them to work on. So, uh, yeah, they're, it's a good group, and it's gonna be a busy couple of months for those volunteers, and I really appreciate the effort that, uh, they've committed moving ahead.
Have you, um, have people sign up for your delegation day, or do they just show up?
Yeah, they have to register, uh, through the team, and, uh, that way we can get them on the schedule and kind of give them an idea of what information we're looking from them. We want to understand who they are, you know, where they're going, and how they, they would fit, so we kind of have a template that we're looking to, um, to the groups to present to, that was really awkward. So, uh, yeah, so we have a plan, so if you want to speak to the delegation day, uh, contact the office here, and we will get you on the list and tell you what information we would like from you, and then the, uh, group will be working through that.
And that's this Saturday?
That's this Saturday.
And did you, have you, do you know how many groups have signed up? Have you had a good following?
I don't know. Jared, you know?
Do you, uh, Jared, currently have, uh, four groups that have, uh, presented work?
So just to, so that's four new groups. We've also, in the past, heard from rugby and other groups, and so we kind of indicated to groups that already presented that, um, you know, we know your story, so if you do want to present, you're welcome to, but we are aware of your, your story and your needs, and are keeping that in mind as we work through it, so.
Okay, I've been hearing quite a bit of interest in the community around that quarter section, so I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of, yeah, good. Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for that update. All right, that's a wrap on reports. Uh, I guess just our in-camera item now, maybe a motion to go in camera? Councilor Flowers? All those in favor? It's carried. Move into the back room. I don't think we'll have any motion, we, we won't have anything coming out of camera. It's just an update, so.